Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board for Monday, August 28, 2023. This meeting is also available via Zoom as posted on the agenda. We will call the meeting to order with a roll call. Sherri, yep, there is. Sherri Corrick?
Here.
Mike Baptiste?
Here.
Jane Gleason?
Here.
Sam Corbett?
Here.
Carl Schultz?
Here.
And Michael King, the chair, is here. We have the full board. Preliminary business. 7-23 England Revocable Trust, 2014 A and R, four over Jordan Road, 172 Great Neck Road. Is there anybody here to speak to that?
Good evening. Mark Dibb with Cape and Islands Engineering and Rick England, the owner of the property. Tonight, we just have an A and R for the two existing parcels, which are four over Jordan Road, this existing parcel on the corner of Over Jordan and Great Neck Road, and then the parcel behind it were solely on Great Neck Road at 172 Great Neck Road. And I think you guys have seen these parcels a couple of times. There was a small sliver. Basically, the A and R prior to this, we got rid of the sliver to the two original lots. And now Mr. England does own both of these lots. He has lived there since the 80s. Just looking to, he has adequate lot size, adequate shape, frontage to create a third lot. So basically, we've just subdivided into three A and R lots that we believe are, you know, appropriate for the zoning district and meet all the regulations. That's it generally, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have one, but I can go last. Okay. Well, this was modified like two or three times, and I'm assuming that all these changes, as the A and Rs were approved, were all recorded with Registered Deeds because we don't have anything to show us that it was.
Yes, if need be, I can give receipts on the recording of the documents. But yes.
That was the question I had.
Mr. Chair, just a point through you to Mr. Buckland. All those receipts should have been returned to the planning office. Is that correct, Mr. Buckland?
You're muted.
You're muted.
Ken, you're muted.
That's correct. They should have been filed with the planning office.
And can you confirm whether they were or not?
I cannot confirm that, no.
Okay. So can you just make sure all these things, after you file the recordings, they have to get back to us so that we have the record? Can you, I have one question. Can you hold up your map again? Can you just point to each lot and tell me the frontage? The one in the back, I can't.
So Lot 3 has 182 feet.
182, yeah. And which zoning district is this?
It's the R 60, so it requires 180.
Okay. So all three of them have 180. I couldn't always see on the map version that I got the.
This one has 500 or so, and then this one has 200.
And both Over Jordan and Great Neck are approved ways, so I think it, for me, I think it meets the criteria.
Sam? Mike?
You still gonna keep your goats?
They're all passed. I'm not gonna do anymore. You know, they just, it was fun while it lasted, but.
Poor things.
They got to be pets. I mean, it was.
That's all they asked, pets.
Oh, yeah, they were, yeah. Big pets.
Jane?
I'm good.
Sherri?
No questions.
Yeah, so just to echo Carl's point, just please make sure that the recorded, recording from the registry gets back to the planning office.
Okay.
Okay, so having no other, hearing no other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So be it.
Do we have a second? We have a motion to approve the A and R for the Project 7-23 England Revocable Trust, four over Jordan Road, 172 Great Neck Road. Do we have a second by Sam Corbett? All in favor? I don't think Sherri can vote on this, right? Sherri can't vote on A and Rs?
No.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and Sherri will abstain. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next up, Project 8-23 Nancy S. Angus, A and R 3090 and 3092 Cranberry Highway.
Any copy of any prints online?
We have plans if you want bigger copies. There, I'll send. Anybody else want to see a bigger copy?
Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening. Brad Bertola with J C Engineering.
Evening, Rob, attorney. Attorney on this case.
This project involves a Form A application to adjust the property line between two existing lots. Current property at 3090 Cranberry Highway. It's currently vacant, but in the process of trying to find a new tenant for the property. That project involves zoning board of appeals filing, and it was, the board's wishes that the boundary line that bisects the building be relocated so that the building is itself on its own separate property. The current properties in front of you are all owned by the same person. Nancy Angus is the trustee. What currently exists is a, I guess, a non-conforming lot. That's to the far west of the parcel, and a conforming lot at 3092. That's the Skaggs Transmission Building, if you're familiar with the area. We are proposing to adjust the property line between the two, and even after the taking that was done by Mass DOT for Cranberry Highway widening, each lot does have adequate frontage and adequate area. This is in the commercial strip zoning district, requires 150 feet of street frontage and at least 30,000 square feet of land area. The property for 3090 Cranberry Highway shown as Lot LC 28 is proposed to have 150 feet of frontage, the minimum required.
I've been dying to ask this question. How did a building get built with a property line?
You know, that's an excellent question. I asked that when we ran into this problem. I'm representing everybody before the appeals board, and that's just what they said. How the heck could you end up with something like this? But it was an easy fix. It's simply a matter of taking that line, moving over a little bit. That's the only change from the old property lines, and it satisfies all the zoning requirements.
But it didn't answer my.
Nobody knows, and I've represented the Angus family for, well, since I started, 50 years ago, and I have no idea how we ended up with something like that, but we did.
The other question that I had was, you're showing your plans list 3090 and 3092. According to Google, Skaggs is 3094.
Say that again.
According to Google, Skaggs Transmission is 3094 Cranberry, not 3092.
I just took it off of assessors webpage.
Well, you've got that right here, right?
Yeah, field card.
That's what I've been using very long. Maybe we're wrong. Maybe it's another. Could be Google. I just.
Yeah.
Who's usually right? We people are wrong.
Yeah, the building at 3090 was built in 1940, according to the assessor's card.
Yeah, if you look at the street view, it's 3092. If you look at the layers view, it's 3094. So I guess Google had a moment. Yeah, I mean, the thing that was making me crazy was how you built a building on a property line. Good point. I have no other questions. No questions. Mike?
See the existing gravel road access? Where does that go? To the back of the other property or?
It's just a driveway that, again, it's all owned by the same person, so they kind of have a rear, rear gate, I guess, in the fence.
Well, the thing is, the reason I asked that question is if some of their property was transferred to somebody else, it's going to be a problem. No, I mean, it.
Transfer it, and they're looking for an easement over that for some reason. We give them an easement, we transfer it. Tell you right now, there's no intent to transfer anything.
Yeah, you never know, Bob.
Well, you never know. I agree, but it's not a difficult problem to handle, Mike. I mean, it's there, so we showed it.
One sec.
Actually, right now, it's not being used. We've stopped the use of it. In fact, it shouldn't have been used by Skaggs to start with, but he was using it, and we stopped that.
Jane?
I'm good. No questions.
Sherri, you have any questions?
I do not.
The absence of. Questions, further questions? Damn, I was hoping you'd give me the answer on that building. I can't. I was looking forward to it.
I apologize. I think that building was built before even I was born.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the request for A and R for Project 8-23 Nancy S. Angus, 3090 and 3092 Cranberry Highway.
Go move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Abstaining.
Sam?
Aye. Aye.
And chair votes aye. So that'd be 402. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, folks. Appreciate it. Good night now.
Do you guys sign the miler, or do you guys?
Yeah, how long do you think that's going to take to get that back?
You'll be able to pick it up in the planning office tomorrow morning.
Okay, great. That's wonderful. I only had the question because I got another one next week that is critical. This one doesn't matter when I get it up. Okay, I'll get it in the morning break.
All righty, have a great night.
You've got Sherri as abstaining?
Sherri can't vote on A and R, so I've got her as abstaining.
As an abstention?
Yep.
Okay.
Our next stop, 9-23 Swebco LLC, A and R 13 Swift's Beach Road. Do we have anybody online for this? So are we back to people not showing up?
Yeah.
I mean, we kind of held Danny Warren to task over this at the last meeting.
Right, we have to continue the same policy.
I think we do have to be even-handed. I agree with that.
Mr. Chairman, how do we notify A and R applicants? I don't think, well, applicants, how do we tell them they've got to come to the meetings if we're going to act?
Just deny it.
The, can, not appearing before the board to discuss the application, can that be considered in complete application?
No, it can't.
So what's the protocol to get these people to come before us? I mean, we're here on our own time. The least they can do is show us some courtesy and appear to discuss something they're asking us to do on their behalf.
If you can find an error in the application, then you can find it incomplete and push them off.
And, but while, I mean, we had Danny Warren not appear for the last meeting, and we decided not to act on it as a result of no applicant participation, so we can't do that in this case.
We can.
We can do no action.
You know, if you've got questions on it, we here don't have the information. We don't have to approve.
Well, and actually, I did have questions that I wanted to ask.
You know, these people are so arrogant. On our agenda, way far in the future.
Is that the one we just did? There's another. And another.
To put it on the record, what are your questions?
What's that?
What are your questions? So you can put it on the record.
I was just curious why the change in the lot line and what the plans were. I'd like to start asking some of these people with A and Rs, what's the driving decision-making for doing what they're doing? Like, the gentleman for Overlook was very forthcoming, were creating three buildable, well, three lots. But when people don't show up to ask us, I mean, for us to ask them questions, it's kind of difficult to get a feeling for what the intent is.
You can deny it for lack of information. Now, that's it. You know, we've got so many people in this town, they're so arrogant, they think they can walk around because of their name, get whatever they want, and rubber stamp it. That's bullshit.
So what, do we have a motion to do something? You're going to defer action? Is that what you're going to do?
That's what I'd like to do.
You know, when was that thing put in there? Because if we go and we don't do no action, it's going to be a constructive grant. That happens all the time, too.
Right.
And like I said, that's garbage. It's about time we got the backbone and stood up some of these people.
This was stamped at the clerk's office on the 27th, so we're right at 21 days.
Yeah, deny it. Lack of information, let them reapply.
Well, I think, I think we would be, I understand exactly what you're saying, and I, with an A and R, I'm not sure we have that much flexibility. With other kinds of applications, I think perhaps we could.
I think it gets continued.
Well, no, it'll be a constructive grant. We'll miss the date. See, that's the problem. We can't even negotiate continuing to.
Continuing the hearing because they're not here to.
So there's nowhere, Ken, in the state, the state law that says they have to be here for a hearing?
It's not a hearing, so there's nothing in the state law that says they have to show up.
Well, that.
What is, if it's not a hearing, it's a.
Right, if they don't have to show up to answer questions, then why is this even coming before us? Why doesn't it just stop at the planning office and be approved there?
Because it requires your endorsement.
But I don't endorse it. I don't endorse the fact that we can't talk to an applicant. I think it's arrogant.
I guess what you could do is you could not accept the application, and under your rules and regulations, the acceptance of the A and R happens at a board meeting.
So we don't accept it on the basis of a lack of information because there's no one here to answer a question?
Exactly, I think that's the tightest you can get it.
Which means they'd have to refile. Is that correct?
Yes. I would assume so. I'm open to input from you guys.
This is perhaps something we should address in more specifically in the rules and regulations that we expect an appearance by an applicant in these situations, and that failure to appear is grounds for non-action.
Yeah.
That would be the safer option.
Say that again, Sherri?
That in our rules and regulations, we could add a provision that says that the planning board expects applicants in these situations to appear before the planning board, and that failure to appear will be grounds for non-action on the application.
Right, because at that point, it could be considered an incomplete application because it doesn't officially get accepted, to Ken's point, until tonight. Right? That's when we officially accept it?
That's right.
Well, I think that's a great idea to modify the rules and regs, but it doesn't help us tonight.
But I think Ken's suggestion seems to be a good one.
Which is?
That you decide not to act on it on the basis of lack of information that you require for action.
Yeah.
You don't have a rule or regulation to specifically rely on, but you can rely on absence of information about the application.
Right.
Did I get that right, Ken?
Yeah, that's right.
Right, the fact that we can't, that we can't access any additional information past the written application is, yeah, okay.
If we take no action, is that going to be a constructive grant? You are taking action, though, in this case.
We're not accepting the application because there's a lack of information from the applicant at the time of the application being presented to the board.
And that's the motion. The other one's going to be the same thing.
I know it. That's why I'm pressing the subject.
Yeah, and like I said, I would send them a message. Deny it, period. Let him challenge it. Put the burden on them. You know, everybody coming up with this bullshit, like I said, the arrogance, and that's what's happening. It depends who owns the property and where they live. They think they can do whatever they want to do. What are we wasting our time for?
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, so on Project 9-23 Swebco LLC, A and R 13 Swift's Beach Road, I would entertain a motion to take no action on the application due to a lack of available information through an applicant and/or his representative.
Let's go move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Jane Gleason. All in favor? Mike?
No.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Mike voted.
No.
Because he's afraid it's going to go to a constructive.
What's going to happen, I guarantee you it's going to slip, and it's a constructive grant. You know, I've been around this school a long time, and I've seen that happen before because they're going to say no action, that clock is still running, and they're going to go, they'll go pitch it to somebody, it'll be signed off, and that's the end of it. We had one on Halfway Road. It was a two-lot subdivision, and because somebody didn't follow through on it, it was a constructive grant, and that happens a lot. And these guys are getting too smart for this shit. Just say no, let them come back and let them appeal it. You know, the same one, what we're going to do in the next one, rubber stamp the other one, too?
Yeah.
That's bullshit. It really is. You know, we want to shut off the lights and go home.
I mean, I'm looking for the, I'm looking personally, I'm looking for the best, most effective way to stop people from not appearing.
Send them a message.
I think I'm going to change my vote to no.
So do we want to change the motion?
I say, why don't we recall the motion and reword it?
Okay.
So.
Recall.
You're recalling the motion?
Yes.
Okay. So let's rephrase this. Entertain a motion to deny the A and R for 13 Swift's Beach Road, Project 9-23 Swebco LLC, on the grounds of a lack of available information due to the.
Applicant participation.
Applicant and/or their duly appointed representative being present.
So be it.
I have a motion?
Yep.
Do we have a second?
Yep.
All right, we have a motion by Mike Baptiste, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
I'm trying to define the subdivision rules and regs. If this weren't an A and R, I understand the point. A and Rs are sort of special.
Sort of special, you can't condition an A and R, but you can require information.
Actually, it's.
Yeah.
That's true.
If the information, I'm all for, people have to be here. There's very limited things that they have to provide for an A and R, which is frontage, approved way, and if we could determine that from the plan. I'm just, if it weren't an A and R, we're going to have the same problem with the next one, and we're going to have the same problem with the continuance.
Next, they'll be doing them by mail. You know, send it in, or do it online, and they get approved. I think with Zoom available, silly, not to have somebody available to answer questions.
No, no, I understand.
Oh, I agree.
That's my point.
Well, I don't think we're going to know how effective this approach is going to be until we attempt it.
Vote, Carl?
So we're voting to deny?
To no, yeah.
Voting to deny the A and R request due to a lack of participation on the applicant's part at the meeting.
So a yes vote is to deny?
Correct.
I didn't bring my subdivision rules and regs. I'm going to vote to not deny.
So you are a no vote?
I think that's.
Okay. Yeah.
And the reason is because I think we can discern the limited information for an A and R.
All right.
We've got it.
Chair vote aye. So 1, 2, 3, 4, 411. Next up, Project 10-23 Nancy Elkalazi. I never get his name right. Elkalasi, A and R Main Street, High Street. And we have, do we have someone here for the applicant? Nobody online?
Entertain a motion to deny. Why even waste that time?
Well, this one here, I do, I actually have questions that I would love to have answered that nobody's here to address.
Entertain a motion to deny. Second, lack of information.
Okay, we have a motion by Mike Baptiste, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor of denying due to a lack of information by said applicant? Mike Baptiste?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
She'll file, the applicant shall file. Since the applicant is considered complete by the planning board staff, shall be stamped, such sign should be incorporated in this file. Incomplete application shall be returned to the applicant. Clerk, plan contents. Endorsement of the planning board approval. If the board determines the plan is. I'm still going to vote no. You're right, though, Mike, if we don't act, it's going to get.
I've abstained.
Whatever's stamped.
Like I said, Carl, I've been around here a long time. And we're going to set a precedent and it's going to beat us up.
Yeah, and like...
All right, and Sherri, I think you're right. We need to figure out a way to...
To get it in the rules and regs.
Make sure it's clear.
Moral.
Okay, and the chair votes aye. So 4011 to deny. Public hearings, we have none scheduled. Continued public hearings, 91 and 101 Farring Hill Road, site plan review. The developer has requested from the planning office a continuance to December 11, 2023.
Was it verbal or was it written?
Um...
At least we want something on paper.
That's a good question. Ken, was that request verbal or written?
It was by email.
All right, so we have a documented account?
We have it documented, yes.
Okay.
But again, we have the same problem. Let's just, we can't negotiate with the applicant and we only have two choices. We either continue it or we deny the, we deny the project. And that, that's, that's putting us really in a bad position.
It's a horrible position. I mean, especially for the...
And we've had this problem with, with continuances before. I, I...
What's the protocol for continuance requests, Ken? I mean, is it something they can continue to ask, request forever? Or is it to the point where we just say, no, there's no more continuances? We need to button this up?
We don't ever have to grant the continuance.
Well, you sort of gave into this one because you said you wanted to wait until the Conservation Commission decision was released by the court.
So it's still in the court system?
That's right.
I, yeah, there's a lot behind this.
There is, yes, I agree.
Yeah.
I think in this case, it's in our best interest to allow it.
In this particular case, I agree.
Yeah, I think we should grant the request for continuance, personally. Especially where it's still in court. I think if the court had ruled and it was just something that they didn't approve of, it might be a different story, but...
Do you want a motion on it, Mike?
I need a motion.
Motion, we continue till 12:11.
12:11?
Yep, 12:11.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to allow the continuance request to 12:11:23 on 91 and 101 Farring Hill Road. We have a second by Carl Schultz, all in favor. Sherri?
Sorry, aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. 600 to continue till 12:11. Time for a new planner.
Talking about me?
Okay. Upcoming planning board schedule. Hill, Leef, Leef, O'Han, County Board. Okay, referrals, ZBA, SPR applications. 35-23 Schoolhouse Rocks LLC, 1073 Main Street Residences.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that now we have a meeting on the 11th. If we can...
Yes.
When is this going to the ZBA, Ken?
This is going to the ZBA probably in October.
Oh, good.
Okay, so move it to the 11th?
I move that we move it to at least the 11th.
Yeah.
When the materials are available for us to review.
Will, will all the materials be available for us to review by then, Ken?
Yes, they will be.
Okay.
I just found out today that the 11th may not be a date available for a meeting as well.
Now, we had this discussion all day long and Sonia told me that we... We were...
She was going to check up on it and see if it was, if it was the case.
So is it or isn't it? We don't know?
I haven't, I haven't heard the official word on it yet.
Well, we scheduled a meeting for the 18th, I guess, which is an early meeting anyway.
Right, well, I mean...
We scheduled it because we wanted to get in ahead of town meeting.
For the zoning articles, yes.
Yeah, so I don't, I think we should have that meeting regardless.
Oh, I agree 100%. Yeah, no, and I don't want to taint that meeting with anything else. So can we tentatively schedule it for the 11th? And then if something turns sideways, we can move it to the 20...
25th?
25th.
Yes, 25th would be fine. 25th is open.
Do you want to just move it to the 25th and just play it safe? All right, so, okay, so we have a motion to move discussion on the zoning board of appeals, Project Number 35-23 Schoolhouse Rocks LLC, 1073 Main Street Residences, to the planning board meeting of September 25, 2023. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett, all in favor. Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. ZBA, 35-23, okay. And ZBA referral, application 31-23 Warren, 176 Main Street, Commercial Entertainment. I mean, I'm... We don't have anybody here to help us, but I don't think in this case we need... Do we need them? Just to...
Well, I, no, I don't think we need any, because we were theoretically going to comment, but I have a question through you to Mr. Buckland. Ken, have you found out if we can properly reschedule this so that the SPR comes here and the variance goes to the zoning board?
Uh, no, I have not had that discussion with Paul Turner yet.
So, so you're not quite sure, how did it get direct? You don't know how it got directed in this particular way?
Uh, the indication from Paul was that it was a renovation of an existing building rather than new construction.
But doesn't that still fall under the redevelopment guidelines?
I think it does.
Uh huh. I would have to agree. Which means it comes before us for, at the bare minimum, design standards review.
Well, site plan review, yeah.
Yeah, you know, site plan.
The, the regulation says that the planning board is the site plan review authority in this district.
Right. So can, can we request that it... When's this one going before the ZBA?
The, the 12th or the...
13th, I think it is then.
13th.
The 13th of September. So how do we address this? I mean, does, do we request that the ZBA put off hearing it until it comes to us?
Yeah, I think what you do is you write, you, you vote to write a letter to the ZBA and Paul Turner expressing your concern about and your belief that the process is not being followed incorrectly.
Okay, I'm, I'm all about entertaining a motion for exactly that.
Well, additionally, we need to request from them elevations of the building. We have no idea what they're planning to do to the outside of the building. So how do we apply the design guidelines?
And, and my question, one of the, one of the questions I had was, how, how is the change of use affecting sewer capacity? And, I mean, that building's been a one or two-man shop for years and now you're going to change it to a restaurant. So the sewer capacity is going to go through the, going to go through the roof and suppose that we have a moratorium. So how's that all working?
That's the other one on Main Street you're talking about?
Uh huh, the old advanced engine.
How about parking?
And parking? Yeah, he doesn't have enough parking.
They had a site plan that showed parking. I have some questions about the parking, too.
Yeah, I counted on, on the plan and there's not enough parking spaces.
Well, and that the handicapped accessible parking is all the way around the back and the front entrance is on the front.
So...
I think the ban has been lifted.
I'm sorry?
The sewer ban, I think it's been lifted.
I, I...
Since when? I was at the sewer commissioners' meeting a week ago and it was a hot topic button, a hot button topic.
So Mr. Chair, through you to Mr. Buckland, is there or is there not a sewer moratorium?
Uh, the sewer commission has, has voted to hold back on further connections to the sewer, to the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, well, there's a difference, though, between new connections and capacity.
And do we know what the capacity was for that building? It may have been listed for bigger capacity than they were actually using. So they may be okay, but we don't know that.
I, I, again, I think I would entertain the motion to request that the planning office forward a letter to the ZBA and to Mr. Turner citing our concern about the process and that we feel this project needs to come before the planning board for site plan review and design standards review for the WV, WV1R district.
And I think we should list the additional concerns that we haven't been able to apply an analysis of the design standards because the plans that we got are incomplete.
Yep.
And we're concerned about sewer capacity and connections. So even if they...
And parking.
And then, and we have concerns about parking, all of which we think need to be addressed in the site plan.
Site plan review, okay. So do we have said motion?
Sure.
Ken, did you get all that or can we get...
Yeah, I did.
Yeah.
Now, we have a recording. You can always go back to it.
Second.
We have a second. We have a motion by Sam Corbett to request the planning office forward a letter to both the ZBA and to Mr. Turner concerning due process on this project and to have it appear before the planning board. We have a second by Mike Baptiste, all in favor. Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Absolutely nothing done today. Other business, set public hearing date for site plan review rules and regulations. As it stands right now, the 25th is pretty light. Do we want to pick that date?
I'm, I'm okay with that.
You're okay with that?
The sooner we adopt them, the better. We don't...
Right, I agree.
Wait for a lot of this other...
Well, what, is it strictly an adoption or is there more input we're waiting on?
Well, I think that this is a document that we're going to continue to evolve and refine. Sherri, where do you, we're nearly final draft with what Ken sent, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm continuing to look through that and I think we should compare it to the list of aspirations that we started with and see if there's anything else that we think would be helpful at this point. I do think that we came across an issue tonight with A and Rs and appearances before the board that it would be helpful to address here. But, but I agree with you that we don't and will not be able to be in a position where we're looking at a document that will never, ever need to be changed. So once we, once we accept that, then I think we get where we can get on the document that we have and just view it as a work in progress.
Progress, okay. So do you think it's safe to put that on for the 18th just before the zoning articles? Or do you want to hold it off till the 25th? 25th?
25th is okay, Sherri?
Yes, that sounds good.
I'm not sure how the 18th is going to go. The last time it was lightly attended, I'm not sure how it's going to go. I was hoping for much larger turnout. As you know, I was going to try and book the auditorium. However, Mr. Cosgrove got a whole truckload. He backed a truck up to Ken's office and requested a truckload of documentation, so...
So it could be a little more heavily...
Who knows what Mr. Cosgrove might question?
All right, so, so let's...
Which is entitled to do it and I'm not, I just meant that he, he requested a lot of information.
Yep. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to set September 25th planning board meeting for the public hearing date for the site plan review rules and regulations.
So...
So we have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett, all in favor. Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Remember comments?
You don't want to hear any comments tonight.
A motion to adjourn. Second? Sherri, I think you should second tonight.
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Sherri Quirk, all in favor. Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.